I call the Tuesday, September 4th, regular meeting of Belvidere City Council to order. The clerk will call the roll.
Borwitz, Brooks.
Here.
Crawford.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Ratcliffe.
Here.
Sanderson.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Nine present.
Please stand to the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we ask your blessing as our city council meets tonight. We are intent on doing good work. We seek to represent fairly and well those who have trusted us with this task. May our efforts be guided with insight, understanding, and wisdom. We seek to serve with respect for all. May our personal faith give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us. A lot's been said in this past week about Senator Gain, and I would just like to say that when we have our moan or silence for all those in our community that we've lost, that we include him in that because he's of our greater community of the American good. Lately, we have lost Lori Turner, Maris Nathan, Magdalena Bilger, Richard South, Scott Bentley, Gary Knudson, and Grace Steinbord. Join me in a moment of silence for those who have passed. Thank you and amen. First up, we have approval of the minutes of the regular meeting. Belvidere City Council of August 20, 2018 has presented. May I have a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Brooks, second by Alderman Snow. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented. Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of minutes, will. When your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
And allow me to back up for a minute. Chief Heiser has something that he wanted to share with us, something, some really good news under public comment. And we also have Lori from Kelly Williamson, but she is deferred to speak when her item comes up on the agenda. So Chief Heiser, please share.
Thank you, Mayor. You've all heard about the Jackson Street Fire. I've made a comment before about it and the job our department did that night. Here, just last week, I was, I was told by the Firehouse Magazine that our fire department, Little Belvidere, right here, Belvidere, Illinois, 25,000 people, 30-member department, we won the unit citation award for performing multiple rescues at that particular apartment fire. So Firehouse is going to recognize us this come in October in their magazine. Firehouse Magazine is one of the foremost magazines out there in the fire service. It's my personal favorite. No?
Of course.
Okay. Real quickly, I'm going to speak. Crossfire Engine 102, ladder 150, Belvidere, Illinois Fire Department has been honored with the top unit citation award, which is part of Firehouse's larger awards program, the Valor and Community Service Awards. The crews are recognized for their coordinated actions on March 10th, 2017, when they rescued several individuals from a fire in a 13-unit apartment building. You'll have this in front of you, and I won't read the whole thing. I'll save you that. But I do want to make special mention, mention in the second page, Firehouse editor-in-chief Tim Sondalbeck, he highlighted the crew's efforts during the incident, and he says, "We, as firefighters, often discuss the big one and that career event for which we train and we prepare every day, never knowing if or when it will ever come." On March 10th, 2017, Belvidere Fire Department's Engine 102 and ladder 150 responded to the big one. And their quick and selfless actions are represented by the seven lives that they saved that day. While the tragic loss of a young mother will never be forgotten, the lives that were saved are a true testament of the professionalism, the training, and the preparedness of the Belvidere Fire Department. The Belvidere Fire Department will receive a cash award for the honor and will be featured in the October issue of Firehouse Magazine. And I go on, I mark down here below, "The other top unit citation honorees are as follows." That's why I mentioned Belvidere, 25,000 people. St. Louis, Missouri Fire Department received second place. Third place was San Diego, California Fire Rescue. Fourth place was Chicago Fire Department, and fifth was Dallas Fire. So we're right up there, and I'm extremely proud, so. Thank you so much. Last Thursday, I just want to mention another thing, too. We had a structure fire out on Hurston Road. It's off of Newburg Road. Our engine companies were responding from a trainee that they're at over on Hurbot Avenue. And they made a great stop on a two-story residential out there. And another five minutes, it probably would have been into the structure, and those people would be without probably a home at this time. Within a month or so, because of their actions, their quick response to this incident, that those people will be back in their house in probably a month or so. So I just want to keep, I just wanted to let my guys know out there that I appreciate their training and the things they do for us. So thank you to them.
Thank you very much. Under public hearing, we have none. Under special messages and proclamations, it's our pleasure to present a proclamation concerning Constitution Week. And Kathy Hughes is here to accept the proclamation. Please come on up, Kathy. Proclamation. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17th, 2018 marks the 231st anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17th to 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Mike Chamberlain, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of Belvidere, Illinois, who hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us by this guardian of our liberties. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal, the great seal of Belvidere, Illinois on this fourth day of September in the year of our Lord 2018. Kathy, it's a pleasure to present you with this, as always.
Thank you so much.
Would you share some remarks with us?
I will. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Kathy Hughes, Regent of the Asicatrell Chapter DAR. The United States Constitution stands as a testament to the tenacity of Americans throughout history to maintain their liberties and freedoms and to ensure those unalienable rights to every American. The tradition of celebrating Constitution was started by the Daughters of the American Revolution. In 1955, DAR petitioned Congress to set aside September 17th through 23rd annually to be dedicated to the observance of Constitution Week. The resolution was later adopted by the U.S. Congress and signed into public law on August 2nd, 1956 by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. DAR has been the foremost advocate for the awareness, promotion, and celebration of Constitution Week. By fostering knowledge, excuse me, by fostering knowledge of and appreciation for the Constitution and the rights it affords to all Americans, DAR helps keep alive the memory of the men and women who secured our nation's independence, whose bravery and sacrifice made possible the liberties we enjoy today. Thank you for adding your support to Constitution Week 2018. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, under number seven, we have approval of expenditures, and this week we have none. Under eight, committee reports of minutes of city officers, please note that items A and B, Belvidere Police Department and Belvidere Fire Department overtime reports have been received and placed on file. Brings us to item C, minutes of committee of the whole public safety and finance and personnel of August 27th, 2018, may I have a motion to approve the minutes? As motion by Alderman Sanderson, second by Alderman Porter. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented. Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of minutes, will. When your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Crawford.
Epstein.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Eight in favor?
The motion is approved, which brings us to number nine, our unfinished business. First up, we have ordinance 415H, a second reading. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 150, zoning ordinance in municipal code, a non-conforming use regulations. May I have a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Ratcliffe, second by Alderman Snow. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the motion, will. When your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Ordinance 415H, second reading is approved unanimously. Brings us to ordinance 416H, a second reading. An ordinance granting a special use to permit a solar farm within the rural holding district at 825 North Apton Road, which would be a landfill. Is that correct? Okay. May I have a motion to approve? Alderman Snow, second. Second, second, second. Alderman Ratcliffe. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Yes, Alderman Porter.
I have one question, I guess for Gina, I guess would be the best person to ask. Do you see any problems with this at all as far as reflections? I know some of the complaints I've heard from people that have solar panels in their personal houses are, from neighbors say that the, the sun, when it hits it a certain way, it shines in their, you know, really bright light into their house. Do you see any problem with this at all? It looks like it's in a wooded area, so I wouldn't think there'd be any.
I do not see a problem in this specific location. They're not the rotating panels. They're stationary, so they're only going to catch the light for a couple hours a day because they don't rotate to follow it. And yeah, it's, it's in the conservation district. There's a heavy tree line all the way around it. There's no residents nearby. Right now, the, that portion of Spencer Park is fenced off because it's the landfill, so hikers, environmental enthusiasts, they can't even access it anyway, so they won't see it. And they're about 12 feet off the ground, so I don't see it creating a problem over there.
My only concern is we know that they're sending signals to their alien masters with those lights. Yes, Alderman. Okay. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of motion, will. When your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
The motion is approved unanimously, which brings us to ordinance 417H, a second reading. Let me read that, and then Lori, you can come up. An ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment, bar tavern with video gaming within the general business district at 1776 Logan Avenue. Lori Forsyte, you have the floor. Please come up. If you would please state your name and address for the record.
Lori Forsyte. I live at 1541 Hickory Point Road in Metamora. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak on behalf of Kelly Williamson Company. As stated, they have requested a special use allowing them for indoor commercial entertainment so they can apply for video gaming. It is our wish that when it comes time for the final vote, you'll take into consideration the facts of the request. They're proposing an enclosed area approximately 10 by 15 dedicated to just video gaming only. Although all ages are allowed into the gas station, no one under 21, according to Illinois state law, is allowed into that video gaming area. It is in direct line of sight, also in compliance with the state law. On-premise consumption is required because it's not a truck stop. It'll only be served inside the gaming area and will follow the rules outlined in Kelly Williamson's alcohol policy in the slide four and five of the presentation that was included in your packet. Even though the store is open 24 hours, the video games will only be in operation during the liquor license hours, which are currently 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. Monday through Saturday, and 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. on Sundays. An Illinois gaming agent will perform a final inspection of the proposed gaming area before granting the approval for the license. Their job is to make sure that it is in compliance with all of Illinois state laws and also Belvidere rules. Kelly Williamson was founded in 1926. They have successfully operated the station in Belvidere, providing outstanding service to the community for decades. All the employees that are working in that store are residents of Belvidere. John Griffin, one of the owners, is both a resident and business owner in Belvidere. Lottery is currently at this location, but the city of Belvidere does not receive any revenue from that. Video gaming will allow for the city to receive 5% of the revenue made off of these machines. Video gaming in the proposed location is expected to bring in 17,000 annually to the city of Belvidere, and that's in presentation slide 10. Seventeen locations in a 50-mile surrounding radius have already issued the C-Store pool license that we are proposing for video gaming, successfully without any issues, are following our proposed rules. In addition to, in addition to other locations are on the pending list awaiting their final approval from the state. Out of these 17 locations, 12 have come live since 2017. It shows that times are changing and that cities are adapting to these changes. The cities that I'm referring to are on slide of this included in your packet. Kelly Williamson is not requesting to operate this typical bar that you will think of when you think about going to a bar. They're requesting just the ability to keep authorized beer behind the counter in a small fridge to be served only in the video gaming area. This location currently counts 100% for all alcohol sales. In addition to this, their policy will only allow for two beers in the 24-hour period and will be sold at $9 to deter sales at their location. I'm not aware of any other bar in Belvidere that has those strict policies. There'll be no drink specials advertised about alcohol in the video gaming area. The video gaming will appear much like a truck stop. Kelly Williamson isn't the only business in town that has people of all ages coming into the establishment with alcohol and video gaming. There are bowling alleys and restaurants. There are similar family-oriented businesses in town that are also successfully following rules. Kelly Williamson's policy will take it a step further and have just the alcohol in the video gaming area, which, if you remember, by the state, no one under 21 is allowed. And finally, the planning staff recommended the approval of this request for an on-premise consumption in the video gaming proposed area. There's an available license, and Kelly Williamson is complying with all of the qualifications for this request. Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve, and then we'll discuss. Motion by Alderman Sanderson, second by Crawford. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Sanderson?
Yeah, I was just going to ask you, actually ask Lori. You guys do want to go to, you know, operation there. I use that gas station a lot. I'm just kind of wondering, you know, knowing the layout there, where are you guys going to put that? Is that back towards the washrooms when you walk around the counter or?
There's a drawing in the packet. It'll be.
Ma'am, you can come back up using the microphone, so people at home can hear you.
To answer your question about where the proposed location will be, when you walk into the station to the right, you'll see that they're proposing to take out all the merchandise that's there and replace it within the store, and you'll see that they're complying with the direct line of sight from the cashier station. And it'll be enclosed with one entrance. Half walls.
Half walls.
Mm-hmm. There's currently already food offered, so should they want to take that into that area and play some games and eat, I'm sure that Kelly Williamson would allow that. Five machines.
Alderman Snow.
And I guess, and I was reading in the minutes from the meeting, it did mention that the alcohol that was going to be served to them was going to be brought to them by the cashier that's selling them the alcohol to the enclosed areas. That's still the current?
That's correct. They will have to stand in line at the cashier register, be carted as per their current store policy, 100% carting for alcohol. Then they will be directed to go back to the video gaming area where they will be served in that area only. It is not allowed to leave the area.
And then, as I was glancing through, I thought I saw something about only alcohol that was sold from behind the counter. What does that entail? Does that mean they go to the cooler, bring over purchase or?
They are not allowed to bring, they are not allowed to go grab any alcohol from the cooler to be used in that area. A small dorm-like fridge is what's usually kept behind the counter, only access for the cashier who's doing the carting. So somebody will ask for, "I'd like a beer in the video gaming area." They'll be carted. Cashier directs them, "Go back into the video gaming area, and I will bring it to you." And then she will get the beer and walk it around over into that area.
What if they want something that's not in the little fridge?
They're only offering one type of beer for $9.
Must be a good beer.
And there's no ballgame to be watched.
And then the other thing is also coming up in our, change in our ordinances is to adjust the age for serving alcohol. Does that still mean that you have to keep somebody there at 21 in order to facilitate this portion?
I've discussed with the district manager, video game rules are that you have to have someone 21 on site when the video games are there, so that won't be a problem.
Alderman Sanderson?
Yeah, just a quick question, too, and that means there's no minors that go in that enclosed area?
It's against state law.
Additional questions or comments? Alderman Stevens?
I was just curious, does the state require all video things serve alcohol?
Truck stops don't have to sell alcohol, so if you are three acres, sell over 10,000 diesel fuels and have a separate pump for diesel, then you don't have to have the alcohol.
That explains my.
Kelly Williamson's a little bit shy of an acre. They sell three times as much diesel fuels and, you know, it's just a formality.
Because I noticed the Speedway didn't serve alcohol because.
That's right.
Thank you.
But they have the same rules of direct line of sight into the video gaming area, and no one under 21 is allowed.
Truck stops, fraternal organizations, and one other do not, are not required to sell alcohol, although fraternal organizations usually do.
Sure.
Otherwise, you have to have a liquor license and serve for consumption on premises in order to obtain a gaming machine license. I do want to point out that while planning staff's original recommendation was approval of the case, as a progressive planning and zoning commission, they recommended denial of the case. They voted not to approve the special use of planning and zoning. Doesn't affect your decision tonight, but you need to be aware that the recommendation is not to approve it.
Alderman Snow?
And this is probably more directed toward Gina because she was the staff member, so if I read through the minutes right, there was one dissenting person that showed up questioning and not in favor of this that lived in the neighborhood. Is that correct?
Correct. There was a resident of the neighborhood behind the property that just did not want alcohol sales near him. He thought it would bring in crime and disturbance to the neighborhood. When staff did the staff report, we have to look at, you know, black and white facts. There's bars, there's restaurants, there's bowling alleys right by residential areas that typically do not generate problems. There's adequate parking. People drive to gas stations, just like people drive to bars. So that's where staff's recommendation came from. We look at the black and white facts. But plant commission was concerned about the precedent setting, and there was a neighbor concerned about the crime that it would bring.
Alderman Porter?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that I do like the idea of just a two-beer maximum in 24 hours. I think that's appropriate.
I want to point out that is not a part of this ordinance. That's just their own policy. If they change the policy in two weeks, they change the policy in two weeks. I want you guys to be absolutely certain. I don't think they will.
No, Kelly Williamson is provided outstanding business.
They have no desire to be a bar as evidenced by $9 a beer.
That's correct.
That's ballpark prices.
That is correct.
But, but that's not part of this ordinance, and if they sell to a new user in 10 years and want to change that, they can.
Alderman Snow, and then Alderman Brooks.
Obviously, I assume Chief Woody is familiar with this type of potential issues or problems that you foresee increasing in the calls for service because of this?
I would have to refer to my experience with other establishments that have gaming, and I don't see it causing an increase any more than any other type of establishment that has the sales of alcohol, whether that be a restaurant or a bar or anything like that. I mean, anytime you have any type of an establishment where alcohol is served and money's changed hands, there's potential for crime, but I can't say my experience has been a drastic increase in it.
Alderman Brooks?
Mayor, $9 a beer, I think these bottles are pretty damn big. They gotta be like half gallon, gallon?
Normal standard size, twelve ounce.
Oh, thank you for clarifying.
Yes, not a pitcher of it. Yes, something, you know, maybe non-appalling.
Beer light, or the non-beer. Coincidentally, my sister was in town the other day, and I was explaining video gaming, and she hadn't have a clue what it was, so I took her. It was easy enough and we were convenient enough by the Speedway, and I was able to take her in and show her, hey, this is what it was. And there was four guys playing, and not a peep out of them. They were all just focused, looking at the game, no ruckus, no foul language, nothing going on that, you know, would make us go, ooh, yeah, so that was a good plus. So I wouldn't see it as a deterrent personally.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval, will. When your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Congratulations. You have your licensing unanimously. Okay. Moves on to ordinance 418H, a second reading. It's an ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment, bar tavern with video gaming within the central business district at 522 South State Street. Motion to approve? May I have a second? Ratcliffe. Questions, comments? Alderman Snow?
So Gina, if I understand this right, at this point, this particular facility is not planning on necessarily having video gaming at this point, or is that not the case?
They are. They plan on having video gaming, arcade games, pool tables, foosball. It'll be like an adult arcade with the bars. It'll be like an adult arcade with the bars as well.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, which brings us to item E, ordinance 419H, a second reading. An ordinance granting a special use to permit in-vehicle sales or service within the general business district, 925 Logan Avenue. Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
And Crawford, Alderman Snow's got a second right behind it. Questions or comments, further discussion concerning the motion right now on the floor? Alderman Snow?
So Gina, again Gina, I for some reason did think that somebody voiced concern about this, because this is the car wash up on, down the, down the street from Uncle.
The property manager to that like peach flesh-colored house to the east came because the tenants has said that the speaker at the car wash was allowed. So the property manager, Mr. Simpson, spoke, and I believe they are gonna try to tone down the speakers. They were not opposed to the land use itself. They just wanted the speakers toned down a little bit, so the applicant was willing to work with them on that.
Yes, Alderman Snow?
And largely, this is to adjust the openings and make it a better staging condition for expansion and better use of the property?
There is a variance to allow the driveway to be shifted, and since Mr. Simpson was applying for the variance, it was discussed that would be best to apply for the special use to bring it into conformance, because right now it's non-conforming, it's grandfathered. That way, he wouldn't have to pay certified malions again, throw in water again, you know, he got to save money on commuting the applications. And this way, if due to weather, damage of any kind, he doesn't risk losing his grandfathering status, this will bring it into compliance. But there's no, other than shifting the driveways around, there's no actual building work being done.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is passed unanimously. F 428, second reading, an ordinance granting special use to amend a planned development within the single-family residential district Shaw Mills and Glenmore of River Run subdivisions. Motion to approve? Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Ratcliffe. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Yes, Alderman Frank?
Maybe this question is for Gina. Do you know why he wants to have this ordinance done? Is it because they're all the same?
So what he's, the current ordinance says that the garage cannot extend past the front facade of the house unless it's a silo, then it can go six feet. The style of houses and duplexes being built now, in order to maximize the square footage of the living area, the garage is basically in front of the house so that you're not eating up your house footprint with garage space. He is currently building duplexes in Winnebago County and he wants to use the same floor plan. I will say, he's probably the third or fourth developer that was interested in this property but did not like the garage standards. No one else wanted to go through with the, with the special use amendment to change it. Mr. Bush said, "I'll, you know, I'll see where I can get with that." So, but it is, it's just the common development now to have the garages bumped out in the front. He still has to meet the total facade coverage, the building materials, the anti-monotony requirements, it's just changing the garage standards for setbacks.
And to make something very clear, he's not asking for a change in any of our codes. This was originally a special use that was approved prior to the recession, at time we started plating out all the Hardeman developments. And the planning staff at that time requested certain additions be added, requirements put in the planning of development, anti-monotony clauses, this garage setback issue. So it's not part of our code. Our code would actually perfectly allow this anywhere in the city. It was just their original development controls that the planning department asked put in place at that time did this. And what they're looking to do is undo that extra control that was put in place to actually comply with our regular codes. So it's actually coming to compliance with that code.
So we won't open up precedent by doing this?
No, no.
No.
Alderman Freeman, then Alderman Snow?
So isn't, you have to have your house 20 feet back from the street, right?
Correct.
So to have the garage out further, you're just basically shortening your driveway?
The garage, the, the structure has to be 20 feet, so the garage has to be 20 feet. The front door will probably be like 35 feet now. But like Attorney Drellis said, the overall setbacks, he's gonna have to comply with the basic zoning code now and not this additional standard. So the garage is at 20 feet, and if he wants the garage to bump out, that means the house is pushed back even farther.
And what was the rationale, and maybe you weren't here at the time, for requiring that in the first place?
It is part of the West Hills neighborhood plan, which called, called for higher aesthetics and design controls, so that was the rationale. They were just looking for higher aesthetics. A lot of people will argue that a completely front face of a house is ugly too, so I mean, aesthetics is up to the, the personal, you know, the individual person.
Having been around and been involved in those negotiations, man, that was, this was a sticking point for a long time with developers, because I didn't like the idea. But back then during booming housing heyday, they were able to sell almost anything. Now they're having issue, they're having more difficulty selling houses, obviously. It's turning around again, but not 100%. There was two rationales for it. One was the planning staff at the time thought looked better not having the garages out in front. And the second rationale was, whether you agree with it or not, by having flat fronts of houses, people could sit in the front yard and look up and down the street and say hi to their neighbors. Or if you have a garage sticking out in front, you may not see your neighbor. You know, whatever. Those are the two rationales, though.
Alderman Sanderson?
Yeah, I was here when they, we're having that discussion and, yeah, that was, you know, my, my question is not that I wanna micromanage someone's neighborhood, but it seemed like, what about the rest of the neighborhood? I mean, that was to try to set a way that had the neighborhood looked, and they wanted to keep it that way. So has there been any objections to anybody from the neighborhoods that, you know, have those garages up front?
There is no neighborhood. The property was platted, the roads were built, and there has not been a single groundbreaking out there, so.
You know that parcel of land on the west side of Shaw Road?
Nothing. Okay.
Where the streets to nowhere?
I must be thinking of some other place that they had the same deal going on in the West Hills. I remember that discussion on, about the West Hills.
That same language is in the, and will remain, I believe, in the, I don't think this specialty applies to this, does it, the River Run?
No, they're preserved, there's Deer Hills, there's Village River Run, there's River Run, so there's multiple subdivisions within the West Hills neighborhood. They all have their own individual standards. This standard was for the Shaw Mills and the Glenmore of River Run subdivisions, and yeah, there's, it was platted, it was built, well, the roads were built right around 2007. We all know what happened. And like I said, there's been several developers interested, but they did not like those design standards. But yeah, there's no, there's no neighbors to be treated unfairly in this situation.
Yeah, I mean, as long as there's no changes to the neighborhood or anything, I don't have any problem.
There's similar, similar language in other planning developments that Gina just mentioned. This change will not affect those, because it's only talking about the one development at this point.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Excuse me. Hearing none. All those in favor, will when your name is announced, signify by saying yes. Those opposed, no. Excuse me, got a little frog in my throat.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brooks?
Yes.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Ordinance 428, second reading is approved unanimously. Congratulations. Up next, under G, we have ordinance 421H, a second reading, an ordinance amending Chapter 150 zoning ordinance in municipal code, non-conforming use regulations. May I have a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Frank, second. Don't be shy. Alderman Brooks? Questions, comments, or further discussion? Alderman Snow?
So Gina, could you give us the synopsis of this one, just in a nutshell, please?
Basically, what prompted this is the Alexander House, which is the big green-blue Victorian right by Boom County Autobody. They're a zone central business. They've been zone central business since the adoption of zoning in the mid-'50s. And in the past, if you were a legal non-conforming use, you could get loans and financing. Since the recession, the banks have really restricted their policies and they will not grant any kind of financing for legal non-conforming uses. So the Neil bosses have moved and they cannot sell their house because no bank will grant a mortgage, because it's legal non-conforming. So upon talking to their attorney, it was, I don't have the staff report in front of me, too many files. There's quite a few houses that meet the same criteria as them, that they've been, they're since before zoning, now they're commercial, and what for decades wasn't a problem is a problem as far as financing. I do know there's another residence on Main Street, they've been trying to get a loan to do some remodeling and they can't. This will just allow them by special use to bring it into conformance, so that way they can get the financing, they can buy, sell. True, they're zone central business, we want commercial businesses in there, but if you let them sit vacant or unable to get any kind of financing for repair work, then they're going to fall into disrepair. Now you're gonna have a blighted downtown, and staff doesn't want that either. So this tax amendment will allow them to maintain until the time that it's appropriate for them to become commercial and fully comply with the code.
Alderman Snow?
So anybody who does want to come forward that falls in this jurisdiction in that area can apply for the special use. This is what lets that occur?
Correct. This allows them to apply for the special use. And the reason why we did special use and not outright permitted is because there could be a situation where the house is really not appropriate there and we don't want it to be continued, or they're going to want to expand it or change it in a way that maybe now the driveway is in a very dangerous location or something like that. So we still wanted some control over the redevelopment.
Case-by-case basis is another way. Alderman Freeman?
So how is it that this house is commercial? Is every house in the business district zoned commercial because it's in the business district?
Every property, so there's, there's no business, like defined business district boundary. We have the downtown that is mostly zoned central business, and there are quite a few houses that are in that central business. And part of it is because when you create, for instance, this one, it was Boom County Autobody, which is commercial, them, which is residential, and then Got Kids, which is commercial. You don't want your zoning district boundaries being all zigzaggy and, and cut out, so they kinda made straight lines. They followed the river, they followed the railroad, they followed major streets, and by using those boundaries to block off the zoning district, then, yes, some houses were included in that. We didn't have zoning until '56. These houses existed well before '56, so they were just inadvertently grouped in, which, like I said, back in the day, didn't make a difference. You could still buy, sell, refinance. It's after the recession, they're having difficulties being able to do that.
One of the reasons this is arising is when we did zone, and they established zoning, and this happens all the time, you do create essentially a district, usually it's along your artillery roads, states or what have you, and you call it central business or some zoning district where residential's not allowed. The houses are allowed to continue to be their grandfather. But most codes, ours included, have a clause in there that says if they're destroyed or damaged by 50% of their value or more, you can't rebuild the house. It has to go to commercial zoning, which is why they can't get the financing to unmortgage or to refinance for improvements, because the bank will exist and says if something happens, you can't rebuild, we're out our money. So this will allow them to get the special use and they can get their financing.
Additional questions or comments? Alderman Stevens?
Is this for just the, the central business district that's in this red area on our map here, or is it for all houses in?
All, all properties within the central business district.
Within the red map that we got right here.
Yeah, if we did it citywide, it would be overwhelming, because are you non-conforming because of lot size, because of setbacks, because of lot coverage, because of zoning, like, it's too much.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval, motion now on the floor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brooks?
Yes.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Ordinance 422H is approved unanimously. Okay, now we have item I, which was placed on the table.
Was it 421? Now we're on 422?
What did I skip?
422.
Oh, sorry. Number 422, second reading, an ordinance granting a special use to permit a single-family residence within the commercial business, central business district at 519 South Main Street.
And this was the applicant that gave rise to the tax amendment that you just approved?
Sorry, I was thinking of the same one. Motion by Alderman Snow, second. Alderman Ratcliffe? Questions, comments, or further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval, a motion now on the floor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Was anyone opposed? I guess not. Okay. Which brings us to item I, which was placed on the table. A motion to remove it from the table? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Frank, is now removed. Well, everybody will vote. All those in favor of removing it from the table, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Sanderson?
No.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
No.
Brooks.
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Okay. It is now removed from the table. It's a motion to approve the proposal from Northern Contracting in the amount of nine thousand six hundred and twenty dollars for the installation of a thirty-foot cantilever gate. This work will be paid for from the street department line items zero-one dash five dash three ten dash six thousand two. Motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford. Oh, we're, we're still at the same place. We've got a motion and a second. So we'll have discussion. Further discussion? Alderman Snow.
And I guess I'll address this to Clayton Stevens, but in the, I understand your apprehension about spending the money and for an automatic gate and that. But having been on the fire department, do they not have a garage door opener that opens and closes the garage doors to let the vehicles in and out?
Yeah, we're an emergent, the fire department's an emergency.
They could have a guy standing there to open it up each time. They got to fire up the truck, you know. So, you know, it's the same kind of convenience. I realize they have an emergency, but a lot of calls they're going on are not emergencies.
Yeah, it's an emergency, and it's also there on.
I have a question for the council. Can I see a show of hands of who all went out and really looked at this installation? Okay, that's admirable. And I'll make a point here. A lot of our trucks and all of our installations have automatic gates with an automatic opener in the vehicle. The time it takes to stop, get down from the truck, open the gate, go back in the truck, move the truck in, and if you're going to be there a while, close the gate, or at the very least, when you go back out, get down out of the truck and close the gate up. Particularly in a season where we're doing a lot of branch pickup, or those kinds of things, you're going to end up spending more in payroll over a period of time than what these gates are. And every time a guy gets up and down out of the truck, it presents an opportunity for someone to slip. I mean, this, this is, this is the modern world here, you know. This is not an extraordinary request. It's in line with the budget and the budget line item they have for spending on this kind of stuff. We try to make the jobs of the city employees as fluid as possible, because we have fewer employees than we, we really need. And we need to have the ease of in-and-out. So, you know, I, I don't know what the real objection to this really is. But Brent, do you have something to say?
Well, just, just some information for consideration. In the packet was a, was a, the proposal from Northern Contracting with a breakout of what it was for the gate itself, as well as the electronic operation. And just, I guess, point of reference, for example, when we do our leaf pickup, there's twenty-five days set aside for leaf pickup, two days, two weeks in the north, two weeks in the south, and a week afloat. So basically, when we pick up leaves, we usually average probably about a load an hour, as far as we have to go dump. So that's, we have two crews out when we're picking up leaves typically. So the time spent on that, you know, twenty-five days with eight trips a day times two, that'd be four hundred trips. And if you had five minutes to get out of the truck, open the gate, go through, get back out of the truck, stop, close the gate up, I figure five minutes per trip for doing that. So that's thirty-three hours for just during leaf pickup. And that thirty-three hours at our rate for employees, that's about eighteen hundred dollars worth of expense for having a manual gate. So I think it'll be, it'll pay for itself in a short period of time. Again, we wouldn't make the request if we didn't think it was warranted. Unfortunately, we're seeing more and more stuff being dropped off there with the way the current arrangements are made, and we're feeling that the gate is the way to curtail that and also make it more efficient for us, so we can spend more time actually picking up the leaves and picking up the branches.
The city clerk has corrected me. I was under the impression that there had been a motion to approve at the previous meeting with a second. She's indicated that there was not a motion to approve. It was simply put on the table immediately, which is not a usual way of doing things. But so at this point, it would be appropriate to have considered, to continue discussion after a motion to approve with a second.
Did it.
I approved it, and so did Brooks.
I consider this bid only half of what's going on. What, I don't see anything that shows what ComEd's going to charge to bring power down, because there's no two-twenty down there. And of course, Commonwealth Edison's going to have to put a transformer in and run electricity. I don't see that anywhere in any of the consideration of this, which is going to be a cost.
There will be a cost to ComEd. I have not contacted them, and that, depending on, on how this vote goes, I will have to contact them or not contact them. So, if it's approved, we'll be contacting them. We will be doing most of the work in, in, as far as that installation goes itself. Probably the only thing that will be done by contract would be perhaps the actual meter setter, although we have done those in the past, working on our own behalf as a contractor for a building. I guess I'd remind council that that expense will be there eventually. Anyway, service will be required if and when we lose the leaf building for storage. The long-term budget for the city of Belvidere includes construction of a new building on that property to be utilized by police, fire, and public works in all of the city for storage requirements, as well as future use, mainly for the wastewater treatment plant expansion. Again, that's in your long-range budget. I think it's probably four years out. So that service will be there forever, be needed eventually in the future.
Yes, Alderman Frank.
Uh, Brent, I have a question. When we get this gate, will they be able to go around to drop off things, or can they drop off things over the gate?
I guess theoretically, it'd be a lot harder for them to drop stuff over the gate. The picture that I included at the committee meeting showed where they went over the cross of the cable gate that we got there now. They were able to drop a log, a good-sized log, over the top of that. Having a six-foot gate there, it's going to be a lot harder for them to be able to do that kind of work without being caught. No, they will not be able to drive around the gate. There will be extensions and stuff put on that's included in this work to eliminate that possibility. And eventually, the whole site, once we put the building up, then we will probably be required to have a fence around a perimeter of portion of the property.
Alderman Porter.
Yeah, Brent, I didn't quite catch that. You said about eighteen hundred dollars in savings and manpower hours. What period of time was that you were talking about?
That's just for, basically during our leaf pickup, when we're running out there, dumping our loads of leaves as we go through leaf collection. That's twenty-five days that we've got set aside that takes us on a typical year for picking up leaves. That doesn't include any time when we're out there now for storm damages, include any time we're out there now for, that's where our grindings are at, to pick up our grindings. That doesn't include any time that we're doing tree trimming on our own, which we do. That doesn't include any time for during the branch pickup. That's just strictly for a quick recollection of the leaf pickup program.
Okay, so you're saying eighteen hundred dollars in savings in one, one season, then?
Just one season, just for leaves.
And there are six other functions that we do all the time that go back and forth out of there. Alderman Sanderson?
That's okay.
That's okay. Alderman Brooks?
Yes, Brent, the gate itself is going to cost seventy-four ninety, right?
Correct.
The electronic part of it is only twenty-one hundred dollars.
Correct.
So we're actually, we're going to have to have a gate. So we're actually talking about twenty-one hundred dollars here, as to whether to make it electric, or make the guy get out of the truck and open the darn thing.
Correct.
That's ridiculous.
Eighteen hundred dollars just during leaf pickup, and we'll pay the majority of that in one year. Alderman Sanderson?
What's the life of the motor that would move the gate back and forth, and how long, you know, how long do you think that will last, and if, do we have any kind of warranty on this? Being a new installation, my guess is it's going to come with a standard twelve, twelve-month warranty. As far as how long they last, I can probably give you an example. The wastewater treatment plant has the same type of setup there, and that fence has been there for as long as I've worked for the city, so we're pushing thirty-five years. And it certainly probably needs a little bit of maintenance now and then, but yes, they're built to last. So what did you mean by, back to Alderman Stevens' question about concrete testing and electrical, what did you mean by the concrete testing? Is that for the poles in there, or is that for pavement in front of the gate, or what? It was conduit. Oh, conduit. Conduit, not concrete. The conduit.
It says concrete, right on it?
Well, that's, that's for the posts and the stuff, that's for the actual gate installation.
So that cost?
That cost is not even included in that? No, no, the concrete, no, 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 no. That's concrete testing. The conduits and electrical by others, that's, most of that work will be done in-house by ourselves. So how much does testing usually cost you? We don't usually test the concrete for, on the posts and stuff, because we know where the supplier, where the concrete's coming from. It's a standard disclaimer that they put on all their, all their projects, because typically that'll be part of the engineering, if it's a big project, or it's required pour.
Alderman Freeman?
So, we're going to have to have a gate there regardless, four years from now, six years from now. It's going to be more expensive than it is now, and we're quibbling over twenty-one hundred dollars, which we will save in less than a year's time.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none. Alderman Stevens?
I think we've only got half the bid here. Commonwealth Edison is an important cost in this. I make a motion, we table this till we get Commonwealth Edison's bid.
Second. Motion to table.
Second.
Motion and a second. The item is table. All those in favor, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
No.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
No.
Stevens.
Aye, to table.
Brooks.
No.
Crawford.
No.
Did anybody want to reconsider their vote?
I would, I would like to.
And what would your vote be?
I, no.
So, what do we got?
We have four in favor and five against.
He did.
That was to table.
No, I didn't. Just like the gold brooks last week.
Okay, so now we can.
Did I say something? I was just getting, are you counting your vote? That's what I said. Yeah, I'll call you too.
Easy now. Hey, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen.
Probably make a mockery of this place every, every week.
George, please, please, let's get to the business at hand. Everybody has strong feelings about what they have strong feelings about. The whole idea of what we do as a council is learn how to work together for the better good of all of our citizens. People are allowed to change their vote. Okay? So, where are we? City clerk?
I would guess we're ready to vote.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion to approve the proposal from Northern Contracting in the amount of ninety-six twenty for the installation of a thirty-foot cantilever gate, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
No.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
No.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Motion is passed. Seven to two. Under new business, yes.
I would just like to clarify, nobody tells me how to vote.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, we have, under silent reading, it's first reading, typically we don't do anything. This is silent reading, but I read them for the folks listening or watching at home. We have silent reading of ordinance four twenty-one H. It's the first reading ordinance amending section ten thirty-seven prohibited employment of the city of Belvidere municipal code. Then, under item B, we have a resolution which we will deal with tonight. It's resolution twenty-eighty-three dash twenty-eighteen. It's a resolution authorizing the execution of collective bargaining agreement with the Belvidere Fire Department officers, a historic bargaining unit, I L R B, case S dash C A dash zero-nine dash one twenty-five, Attorney Drella. Do you have anything you want to share before we ask for a motion?
I think we beat this horse before, so. Unless there's questions?
Well, motion to approve, motion by Alderman Ratcliffe, second. Alderman Snow, questions or comments from the council concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval and motion, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Resolution twenty-eighty-three dash twenty-eighteen is approved unanimously. Thank you. Next up, under C, at the behest of Alderman Stevens, he has asked for reconsideration of ordinance four twelve H that was passed, second vote, an ordinance creating a home rule municipal retailer's occupation tax and a home rule municipal service occupation tax for the city of Belvidere, exercising his right as one who voted for this. He had a change of heart and changed his vote, which according to Roberts' rules, he can be brought up for reconsideration. May I have a motion to reconsider? Motion by Alderman Porter.
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Stevens.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, was Alderman Porter one of the voted in favor last time?
Yeah.
Only, only a member of the by that actually voted in favor of the sales tax at, at the last second reading can make this motion.
Then we go to the minutes that are in your packet. This is twenty.
Four twelve H. Four twelve H. Ah, the I's were Ratcliffe, Snow, Stevens, Brooks, Crawford, and Freeman, so Porter is not eligible. So I need a second by Ratcliffe, Snow, Stevens...
Now you need a motion for somebody that voted in favor.
Okay. Oh, which is, is Ratcliffe, Snow, Stevens, Brooks, Crawford, and Freeman.
You said second.
Okay. We have a motion from Alderman Freeman, second. Okay. Alderman Stevens. Okay, so this is a, kind of a strange little dealie here. We can discuss this, but this comes back for a final vote and starts at the same position it was in when we did the final vote in two weeks. I would bear, ask your forbearance to allow me to make some remarks. Discussing political ideas and things that become political for people to make statements and express an opinion that is different from mine. And that is most certainly reasonable. And that's why we are here, because everybody has the ability to express an opinion. Under this tax increase vote, there have been a series of articles that have appeared in local publications that have made certain disingenuous and completely false statements about this process. I finally reached the point where I'm going to respond to it. Alderman Stevens, I believe you had this placed in the Rock River Times and also in the Journal. In this, you make an allegation that the mayor's reason for the proposed tax increase is the mandated pension payments for police and fire departments. That is not true. The reason for the tax increase is because the funds that we receive are no longer enough to leave us money for capital projects. You say that the council has told money cannot be earmarked to be spent on much-needed projects, such as repaired or aging infrastructure, repair of city streets, et cetera. That is not true either. I don't have a problem with agreeing to put this money into the capital budget for infrastructure repair. That is not the issue. However, he goes on to say, the funds from the tax increase will simply be dumped into the general fund. Nothing is dumped. It all becomes part of the budget and the operations of the city, which is exactly what the general fund represents. You are certainly within your purview to mention that you feel that little will be spent on the south side flooding problem. There has, was an extensive article by Ms. Vela, who is with us tonight, the Register Star, that outlined a step-by-step program for what we plan to do on the stormwater management on the south side of town, which you know the budget, projected budget for that is forty-two million dollars plus. You go on to say the utility tax generates about two million dollars each year. It does. The utility tax is not quite enough every year to pay for the state mandated extra contributions we make to fire and police pension funds. Last year it was two-point-two, this year it was two-point-three, next year it'll be two-point-four, and it levels off. That, some of that funds are what are used to pay your pension, sir. To bring this item up, and then we talked about making statements about sequestering. A long time ago, when the utility tax was first passed, it was a sequestered tax. And when we had the downturn in the economy, we had to take that money to even operate the city, which came in two weeks of not being able to make payroll. A sequestered tax requires a supermajority vote to take it from being sequestered and put it in the general fund. A supermajority vote requires eight of the corporate authority, which include me, so eight of eleven. So what that means is four Aldermen can control the other seven Aldermen on a vote like this. I understand a zealous representation of your people in your ward. I would point out, in Ward One, we have spent two-point-two million dollars in the last eight years on infrastructure repair. There are five wards in this city, and they all have needs. There are twenty-six thousand people in this city, not twenty-five hundred, which is about the size of an average ward. To go on, the department heads and mayor set the tone for each budget. The department heads and mayor work for a preliminary budget, which is reported to the council for full discussion on each line item in the budget and the majority rules. So everybody here who is an Alderman has an equal say in whether something gets voted up or voted down. Perhaps the most egregious comment in this is, in current year's budget, the luxury item was a ninety-thousand-dollar salary with forty-thousand-dollar benefits for an assistant fire chief. If you read it that way, it sounds like we proved that. We did not. It was voted down by the council, as were many things in the budget that are discussed thoroughly. This is an unnecessary expenditure. We determined that at the beginning of the year when we talked about the budget.
At my request.
Good for you, but to put it into an article like this, the way that it's put in here, it leads people to believe that it was voted up, and that we are wasting money. So what would have been appropriate is to say that was brought up in a general conversation when we talked about the budget, because we bring it up every couple of years, as you remember, and that you led the charge to say that you thought it was an unnecessary expense. And the council, in a majority, agreed that it was, and we did not have the money in the budget. These kinds of inflammatory, disingenuous, and outright false allegations are set to... These kinds of inflammatory, disingenuous, and outright false allegations are set to raise a tone with the constituency. People don't come to our meetings, they don't watch on television, they don't listen on the radio. A very small number of our citizens are fully informed. When they read something like this, if I read something like this and I didn't know better, I'd go, oh my God, let's get rid of that guy, let's get rid of half of the city council. This is not the way that we're here to do business. I know it's an election year next year, and some people are rerunning for their seat. I think that it just, when it degenerates to this kind of stuff, which is on the national political scene, it's on the state political scene, I think we're overreaching. We're all here to do our job to represent all of the citizens in the community, not just in your ward. And when we hang up our coats, we're all on the same team. And if something's unreasonable, we can discuss it and say it's unreasonable. Absent the passage of the sales tax, we have no money for capital projects, period. There's already been a discussion that we will put that money toward capital projects. The pet project, and that phrase seems to be very, you're very, use that a lot lately, of the mayor, I have no pet projects. We determine the projects together every year with the capital budget. Logan Avenue has been on the docket for the next major street repair that we do. It's a major street, it serves the entire community, and it's past due, just like Columbia Avenue was past due, just like State Street was passed through. I take offense at this, not for me personally, but someone would do this to the folks that believe in us, that we're doing the right things as a council to represent the entire community. Thank you.
I totally disagree with you. I stand behind everything on that, and I really believe very little of it'll go to the South Side, because when you were the Alderman, you ignored them people when they called you to come there.
That's absolutely untrue. Absolutely untrue. Anytime anybody called me...
Well, after talking to Ms. Fowler, she had an entirely different manner, and I will stand behind that letter entirely, and I don't care what you think.
Well, that's fine.
And I'm gonna write another one. It is the fact, it is the truth. Truth is of the...
And, and just so everybody understands what we're voting on, we are not voting on the sales tax itself. We are only voting on whether or not, in two weeks from now, we're gonna re-vote on it, okay? So don't misconstrue what we're voting on right this minute, what the motion's on the floor, is just whether or not we're gonna re-vote in two weeks. Otherwise, if it doesn't go for another re-vote in two weeks, it goes into effect, I assume, whenever the date was that was put on it.
Could you explain that one more time?
Attorney Drella.
Um, we've actually, I think I've been through this at least once before, I did a memo of the last time this came up. On a motion to reconsider, the motion is made this evening, it has to be made at the next meeting after the original motion was decided. So, at the last city council meeting, the council voted to approve the sales tax. A motion reconsider can only be brought by somebody that voted in the majority last time at the next regular meeting, as we're at today. Once the motion is made and a second, if it is passed, it puts the original ordinance on the sales tax, back in the same place it was in last time at second reading. It automatically lays over on the table for two weeks and cannot be considered again until the next city council meeting. So, the vote, and the only question tonight is whether or not it should be reconsidered. If that passes, it puts it back in the same exact position it was in two weeks ago at second reading, and that would be at the next city council meeting.
It does not approve the sales tax. It simply requires us to vote once again. So, there are no additional questions or comments? If you are in favor of reconsidering? Alderman Porter?
Well, I'd just like to make one comment, is, I think that we have to, you know, be careful with the home rule and, and make sure that we're using it responsibly and, you know, make sure that we don't upset people to where they're gonna ask us to remove the home rule. So just something to think about.
Okay. Brent?
And just one quick comment, too. I don't want the council to lose sight of, as you recall through the budget process, staff and financial manager had outlined six or seven different funding mechanisms that the city could turn to, to raise funds for capital improvement and budgetary items. And one of those items that we have not addressed yet was the establishment of a storm sewer utility, which would be specifically done to raise funds for storm sewer work, AKA the South Side storm sewer projects that Maxon Woodman did. So that work has yet, that was one of the items that the council reviewed through the budget process, indicated a willingness to consider that. I just met with Strand and Associates last week. They have had experience in doing numerous, establishing numerous storm sewer utilities. They were gonna provide me with some background reports of what they've done for other communities. Once I get that, I will be able to share that information with council, but that is a long process to do that, to go through those steps. You're probably looking at least a year to go through that, to get that established, but I don't want the council to lose sight of the fact that we are still looking at that as an option for, for funds being available for, specifically in this case, if you do a storm sewer utility, they would be specifically for storm sewer projects.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I just, you know, I know there's, there's people that, I think, I've heard that they're trying to get a petition to get us out of home rule, and I really don't wanna see us, I don't wanna see that happen.
Not silently.
Well, okay, but I'm just saying, the more we pass, we've, the council has passed some things already that increase the budget, and I think that we're going too fast.
I was just gonna say, if this does not pass, you can be ready to lay off a lot of people come the end of the year. This will be a very difficult budget process, and there will be no road projects.
Three or four hundred, maybe a few more, are Belvidere folks, the rest are more regional, so we don't get the sales tax from them either. All we did with this request for sales tax was equal what everybody around us is already getting for sales tax. If we keep putting Belvidere further in the hole, here's where you end up. You don't do anything, or you borrow money. Okay? We don't borrow money. We're not seven million, or eight million, or ten million dollars in debt. As far as for home rule, there are a lot of little nuances of home rule to get us out from under the state of Illinois mandates that we thou shalt. Not all of them, but it gives us freedom to do a lot more things. And if they want to repeal home rule, it's up to them. We've not abused the tax that we can do. This is the first time we've asked for a tax increase since we've been home rule, and the first time we asked for a tax increase in the sales tax in twenty, twenty-two years. And please remember, the seven-and-a-half percent, the city only gets, what do we get? One, one percent of that comes to us. The rest goes to the county, the township, and everything else. If you spend ten thousand dollars in Belvidere next year with a new sales tax, it'll cost you fifty bucks more than if you spent it this year. Alderman, no.
And I guess, you know, to Mr. Porter's deal about abusing the home rule, you know, we've had this since two thousand and ten. We really haven't pushed or used it. We haven't raised the tax levy on homes at an appreciable amount or beyond any what were already the fix deals that would ordinarily occur if we had home rule or not. So I don't think we're making abuses. I understand your point, and when I came on board in two thousand and eleven, it was during the height of the recession, and I remember Mayor Bearden going, boy, you picked a really good time to come on board, you know, 'cause it was, he was being facetious, and I commend you, new people, for coming on board, but if people that have an issue with the decisions we're making, then they need to ante up and run for office. And let them come in and get voted in and make those hard decisions that are gonna affect whether or not you lay off fire, police, and start getting rid of more public works people and not having a lot of the services that we already, have already been limited by financial resources. And I just don't see it happening, and I don't think we're making an abuse of it, and I don't think it's gonna make or break anybody in the overall scheme of things. I'm not a big pro-tax person myself, but I can see where logistically this is needed. And as long as we manage the budget and keep an eye on stuff so that extra stuff isn't slipped in, and I understand that that's gonna be very difficult when it comes up, because, again, you know, somebody brought up the, the fire chief needing assistance, there's other people and personnel needed in other departments. A structure's gonna need to be built, hopefully if the lease building ever transitions out of coming off of the city pay, um, property, ownership, that, you know, we'll need to divert resources to building a new structure. Well, that's all gonna affect everything, and those hard decisions are gonna need to be made, but they're not gonna get anywhere if we don't have the funds to do so.
Brent, what did you tell me that, what was, we were commenting and passing a couple of weeks, what, four blocks of paving costs for doing a street?
Um, that was in reference to the motor fuel tax, the local motor fuel tax that was implemented, the estimated right now, 'cause we really don't have numbers until we start seeing them come in, but we were hoping, we were, we were thinking two-hundred thousand, hoping for four-hundred thousand. And with that kind of money, basically, we're spending right now about five-hundred thousand dollars in, in street overlays, so we will be able to, it would be my thought that, that money that, from the local motor fuel tax would be used on the overlay program.
Yeah.
And then we would be caught up, basically, we should be doing between seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand and a million dollars a year of, of street overlays, and certainly that money, in addition to our motor fuel tax expenditure, would get us closer. We wouldn't quite be there yet, but it would get us closer to that annual expense.
So, you know, we, we asked the council on six different issues if you wanted us to explore it, and hands were raised unanimously on all of them, and we have. And certainly within your purview to approve or disapprove, but please remember, in this year's budget, we had zero dollars for capital expenditures. Zero. And, and we're paying all our bills on time, and everybody's employed, and we negotiated successful contracts with reasonable raises for our employees, so I think we're doing all the right things. Yes, Alderman Freeman?
So the bottom line is, we need money. We have residents that are hurting, that need infrastructure addressed, and we just can't afford it. In the meantime, Belvidere residents have enjoyed a half a percent less sales tax than all the surrounding communities everywhere, which is where the majority, if not all, of the Belvidere residents do their shopping. They don't seem to have a problem paying eight-and-a-quarter percent to Cherry Valley, to Rockford, to Loves Park, to anywhere else, so why would they have a problem paying eight-and-a-quarter percent to their own community? I don't get it, especially when we have issues. Having said that, I would love to see every dime of this money go into infrastructure, just like we intend it to do. Um, I, I, the only person on this council that I trust to actually vote the right way is myself, so I'm the only person I can trust. So, having said that, council people come and go, administrations come and go. Putting it in the general fund, for me, is putting my trust in other council members, in future council members, and in future administrations to do the right thing, and that's a real hard hump for me to get over. I will vote yes for this tax, but I don't see any harm in having more discussion, and whether it be with our constituents, or whether it be with each other, I don't see any harm in putting this out two more weeks and talking about it.
Alderman Porter?
Okay, I have a question for Attorney Drella. You spoke about the supermajority to take the money out for other purposes. Say we put it on a line item, can we change it so it takes just a simple majority? If we say it's for infrastructure, but we need it for something else, can we put it as a simple majority vote to pull it out for some other purpose?
I did not say it takes a supermajority vote to move it. I never said that comment, made that comment. It only does that if you pass an ordinance saying that it does. I'm gonna go back and use everybody's lousy story about the utility tax when it was first adopted. When it was first adopted, they included a provision within the ordinance that says it's to be used for, I believe it was road purposes only, don't quote me on that, I'd have to look at, but they dedicate it to a sole purpose like roads. And that could only be invaded by a supermajority vote of the city council. Here's the problem, here's why it's a completely red herring. Two issues. Number one, everybody says we don't want the general fund. The general fund is your fund that you spend money out of. You have dedicated funds for water and sewer, I believe there's one or two others, but the orders have required us to get rid of all those other funds. No matter whether you earmark it or not, it's going to be in the general fund. It may have a line on the count saying this should be only spent this way, but it will be in the general fund. The second part of it is, when the storm hit during the recession, and the council found that it needed invade that utility tax and take it away from public works, improvements, roads, and utilize it to meet the bills, actually, there was not a supermajority in favor of doing that, even though the ordinance required it. There's an old Supreme Court case, Roddy versus Washington. And those that are around back here, remember the discussion on that? That says that essentially, if an ordinance only requires passage, a procedural ordinance like that requires passage by a simple majority, a simple majority can undo it. So if you say tonight, or next week, we're gonna amend it to two-thirds supermajority vote to divert these funds in the future, all that future city council has to do is amend that ordinance to say it's a simple majority, and it's done. The supermajority requirements are completely meaningless legally in these kinds of avenues. And I will also point out that that same city council, whether it's you, whether there's different people in your seat in two years, but that same city council cannot spend a cent of the city's money without their approval through the budget process, then ultimately through the appropriation. You are the ones that decide where the money is spent. It's as simple as that. So, certainly, you can put in, this will be used for these purposes. I don't want you to have a false sense of security that that will guarantee it goes to those, those purposes, 'cause a simple majority of any future city council can change that, use it any way they want to.
But the idea of having that amendment to the original ordinance to pass the sales tax could include, like the one did before, a caveat that requires a supermajority, even though everything that you say is true. Alderman Stevens?
Yeah, and I think, you know, we've, we've had some discussions, too, when we're talking about our budget, and then if we have it in, something in the budget already, then we need a supermajority, and I don't know if that's where some other confusion could be.
State law does require that, in order to amend your budget, after its passage, it requires a supermajority vote. That's state law.
So I was just making that clarification that, you know, but if we had an emergency in this town, I don't know anybody in the city council, whether we agree or disagree on other things, that wouldn't move to do that, supermajority, you know?
And I just wanna make one thing clear, there will, you will be able to see every single dollar from, whether it's the local motor fuel tax, whether it's from the home rule sales tax, they will each have their own line item. You'll be able to see every single dollar, every single month, that's coming in from those revenues. So what you decide to do with that money for the next budget process will be up to you. I mean, if it comes to one-point-two million, and through the next budget process, you decide you wanna spend one-point-two million dollars on roads, that is your discretion, but you will be able to see every single dollar that comes in from those revenues.
Alderman Stevens and Alderman Snow?
Uh, yes. I would love to be proven wrong on the amount that's gonna be spent on infrastructure over the three, four, five-year period. I would love to be proven wrong on the amount that's gonna be spent on infrastructure over infrastructure over the three, four, five-year period. I would love to be proven wrong. I always love to hear, the minute we want more tax money or whatever, the first thing on the table is, "We're gonna lay off personnel if we don't get it. We're gonna cut personnel if we don't get this." And I always love the innuendo that my pension, for working for the city for almost twenty-five years, has caused a lot of the problems with the pension problems that have started way the heck back. When I was on the pension board, I knew twenty years ago, from going to different fire and police pension things, that we weren't putting enough money in as required by the Department of Insurance, and that every dollar we didn't put in then was gonna cost that, and then all the interest coming forward. So, the city made their own problem years and years ago. And now the state has decided, enough's enough, you gotta pay.
Actually, that requirement was not in place when you were on the police and fire commission. That was a recently adopted amendment to the state code.
And that's what I said, it's a recent adoption, but years ago-
And the second, the second part of that-
I knew this was gonna happen because of the, when I went to these pension things, they told us that we were kept pushing out the due date, pushing it out, pushing it out.
The second part of that comment is, our actual police and fire pensions are in pretty good, healthy shape. The city of Belvidere, and actually not the city of Belvidere, but the, the good people that serve on the fire and police pension boards, yourself and others after you, did a pretty good job of the investments. The market took a hit, they all took a hit. And so, everybody's pension funds went down. Compared to most communities, ours is in good shape. But the state law does not differentiate between who's in good shape and who's in bad shape. It says you will be fully funded by the state. And so, every city in the state is scrambling like this, not just Belvidere. And frankly, your pension boards did a pretty good job of trying to manage their monies.
Alderman Sanderson?
Yeah, so, a vote yes would be to have this reconsideration two weeks, and a vote no would be to end this. So, I call a question.
Okay. All those in favor of reconsidering this in two weeks signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no.
Ratcliffe?
No.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Snow?
No.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brooks?
No.
Crawford?
No.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Five in favor?
I'll exercise my ability to vote on this issue. I vote no. A tie. The motion is lost, 'cause it requires a majority. So, that's that. Alderman Snow?
You skipped over me and went to Sanderson. I was gonna make a comment, but, and just so, for Marcia and anybody else out there listening, we are not the only ones that can attend the budget. Whether you're an alderman or not, you can come up and you can, particularly during the committee of the holes, you're more than welcome. I would assume that, if nothing else, during public comment, to make comments, and we generally would allow other people to make comments during the regular course of the meeting, at committee of the whole meetings especially. So, so, people that do have concerns, and in the future, you know, you can always come in and write hurt on whomever to hold them accountable. And the budget period's only a couple months, so it's not like you have to spend the whole time here, so.
Alderman Sanderson?
Yeah, I'm just a little confused. I wanna ask the city attorney on the mayor's vote. If, do you have to vote in the last vote before? We've gone through, or sometimes the mayor votes and sometimes it doesn't. I thought you said at, at one time that you have to vote one way or the other. Can the mayor break the tie on a zero, zero vote for this particular thing, or?
I'm not sure the initial part of the question, but the statute is, oh, gosh, I think it's five, three point one dash forty, but I'd have to look it up. The mayor's entitled to vote. In most cases where a supermajority vote's required, there's some days not allowed to, but most he does. He's allowed to vote in case of a tie, and he's also allowed to vote when five other members of the aldermen vote, for our state is five, vote in favor of something. He's allowed to vote. In this case, if I, I wasn't paying that much attention, I'm assuming it's a five-four vote. So, because five vote in favor, yes, the motion would be entitled to vote. The mayor would be, I'm sorry.
Well, thanks for clarifying that.
Thanks.
Okay, and just to end the acrimony in this room tonight, we're all on the same team. It is my full intention, it is Becky's full intention, it is Brent's full intention, that when we discuss the budget next year, that the increase that we see in the sales tax will not be a full year's increase, will be put toward capital improvements, which will include the first steps that we're already spending money on, on the south side of town, to start making changes in that, and also to look at being able to do possibly the first phase of the Logan Avenue project. It would be the intent that we serve all the citizens of the city with a division of those dollars each year that address all of the emergent problems. The only thing that ever changes anything is emergency. And I would hope, as Alderman Sanderson noted, that in time of emergency, we would forget all of this bickering kind of stuff, and I would trust that we would. But trust is one of those things that, when we start this process of doubting one another and making assertions and comments about this, that, and the other thing, it kinda goes out the window real quick. Alderman Crawford?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, first of all, I'm sorry to Alderman Sanderson. We sat on the pension board a long time. And what bothers me, and I don't even know if it bothers Alderman Sanderson, I would think it would, but this guy over here that sits and laughs all the time, thinks he's Robin Hood for the, for the people of the city of Belvidere, his catastrophic injury, which I'm more injured than he is, gets insurance for his family for life, and he just sits there and laughs about everything. You're up there talking, he's laughing. And he's one of the one that dips the most.
He's entitled to everything that he has by law. And he served this city for twenty-five years, and he has my respect for that. And he has a pension, and he has his alderman's salary, and he has his healthcare. But those are things that he's earned in various means. Alderman Sanderson?
And, you know, I was out of order, so, um, let's just move forward.
Let's say all good. Everybody say all good. Come on.
All good.
All good. Okay, next up, we have motions forwarded from the committee of the whole, public safety and finance and personnel of August twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen. Motions will be presented by Chairman Crawford. Chairman Crawford?
A motion to, a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement for police services conservation district.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing none. All those in favor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you, Chairman Crawford. Next up, finance motions will be presented, motion will be presented by Chairman Ratcliffe. Chairman Ratcliffe?
Mr. Mayor, motion to approve entering into an equipment maintenance agreement with Marco Technologies LLC.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, and further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing none. All those in favor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you, Chairman Ratcliffe. Public Works motions will be presented by Chairman Brooks. Chairman Brooks?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a motion to approve the proposal from Engle Electric in the amount of twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars to complete the installation of the new VFD at well number four, and install the soft start from well four at well number five. This work will be paid for from line item sixty-one dash one seven nine zero, water depreciation fund.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing none. All those in favor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
And lastly, we have a motion to approve the low bid for municipal well and pump for the chemical treatment and disinfection of well number seven, the amount of one hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars.
Motion out of committee.
This work will be paid for from the water depreciation account.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Brooks?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
Your honor, I have one thing, if you could, if we could get some clarity between you and the attorney. Just so, generally speaking, when ordinances, like, were approved two weeks ago for the one percent sales tax, I realize that has a start time of, for some reason, I would say mid-September, or trying to get-
January first.
January, okay. But generally, a lot of the ordinances, like when we change in two weeks, the age of the alcohol, and that, it really doesn't take effect until two weeks after we approve it. Is that, or ten business days?
Ten business days.
Ten business days, I think. And isn't that why the reconsideration actually works? So, if you did have it, you kinda stall it, and just a little clarity on some of that. So, when, when technically, two weeks from now, when we, if we pass the age thing, it doesn't really take effect that night?
Not necessarily correct, no. Some day, I can give you guys a memo on it. Most of our ordinances don't take effect for ten days after passage in publication pamphlet form. The state law has varying times, depending on the type of ordinance it is. Most of our ordinances, we put that in my language, 'cause that's what everybody does, to be easy. But if you do the math, if it takes effect in ten days, but you can't file the motion reconsider, print the motion reconsider, it's the next regular city council meeting, that's usually fourteen days. So, actually, this ordinance has been in effect already, even before you brought motion reconsider. It's a strange animal of Illinois state law.
Just in general, though, all ordinances have a stall time, per se, or-
No, not all do.
Not all?
Some, most do, but not all.
It's a lawyer thing.
Yeah. If I told you, I wouldn't be able to bill you for it.
I will now entertain a motion for adjournment. Okay, sure, George.
How would I go about, I wanna bring something to executive session. Would I just come to you, or Sean, or how do you go about that?
Yeah, it has to fit the priorities that are allowable for executive session, so.
Oh, okay.
I will now entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Porter. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now adjourned. If any of you wanna stay around and play a rousing game of Yo' Mama, then feel free, I'm going home.